We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you would, you've received the agenda in your packet or in email format. We'll establish a quorum by roll call, please.
Stephen Ford.
Right there.
Leslie Evans.
Crystal Lacy.
Here.
Roger O.
Here.
Scott Thomas.
Here.
Guy Roden.
Here.
Bettina Cover.
We have a quorum.
All right. Tonight's invocation will be given by Councilor Scott Thomas, Pledge of Allegiance by Councilor Stephen Ford.
Father, we're thankful again for the opportunity you've given us to come here and discuss our town business this evening. And Lord, we pray, Lord, for our whatever decisions and deliberations that need to be made, not that they be guided by your wisdom, but just give us safety and travel as we head home after, and then we pray with this through Christ's name.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of the agenda tonight, I need a, councilors may add or delete any items at this time. I need a motion to approve as submitted.
Subdued.
Second. Got a motion, have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, hearing none, we'll move right on into our introduction of special guests. Ms. Carol Chavez, who a lot of you all know, been a staple of this community for many, many years. And I'm so pleased that she's asked us to do this because I've learned a lot just in the last few weeks, Carol, about this disease.
Well, we'd never heard of it.
Never had heard of it. But anyway, Carol has prepared a statement, so she'll say something after we do, but we're going to make a proclamation on behalf of her and Ms. Sharon Davis tonight as well. But this is the statement that she had sent me via email. My name is Carol Chavez. I grew up in Huntsville and graduated in 1971. In 1972, I received a license to do hair, which I did for the next 50 years. I probably knew your grandparents, your parents, you or your children, since I was behind the chair that many years. I also received a license to be an instructor in a beauty school. I went on to become an educator for CHI, a major hair products manufacturer. No matter what the job I was pursuing at the time, I was always behind the chair doing hair in Huntsville. I would still be doing hair if I had not received the diagnosis of inclusion body myositis. In early 2000, I started having symptoms of polymyosis, even though I didn't know what it was at the time. I can tell you the exact time that I realized something was going wrong with my legs. I could no longer step up into a shuttle bus like I had done many times before. I thought I needed to walk more and get more exercise for my legs and body in general, and doctors agreed, but I found that was hard to do. I had trouble getting up from a regular chair. Also, I had trouble going upstairs. After many doctor visits and many tests over the years, my primary care doctor finally sent me to a rheumatologist. After a muscle biopsy, I was diagnosed with, they diagnosed me with polymyosis. I know I have, I've heard that word somewhere, and I finally remembered that my friend Sharon Davis also had the diagnosis. Polymyosis is a rare muscle deteriorating disease. Besides Sharon and her family, I found no one that had ever heard of it. I did not realize the depth of muscle loss it would entail. I thought it was odd that Sharon and I, both being from the same small town of Huntsville, had been diagnosed with the same rare disease called polymyosis. The doctor tried every drug he could think of that he had, that had even been known to help polymyosis, and nothing worked. I even had infusions of a cancer drug. I also had infusions of IVIG, which is intervenous immunoglobulin, is a medication that contains antibodies from the blood of healthy donors. On my last visit to the doctor, he told me, I'm very sorry, but I have nothing else for you. I left in tears and wasn't quite sure how I was supposed to feel. But after a few weeks, I started asking questions of other doctors and nurses or anybody that might be experienced with polymyosis. I even made a trip to the Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota, to get their opinion. They agreed that this was myositis, but were not sure which one it was. There are several types of myositis out there, and each is hard to diagnose. Later, I was referred to another rheumatologist who had just been to a seminar about my myositis. After more tests and more studies and more pokes and prods, he diagnosed me with inclusion body myositis. At this time, there are no medicines or injections or anything that can help. There is no cure. This has been all within the last five years that I've been diagnosed. In the last few years of my life, my life has changed completely. This is not how I planned on retirement. I also know I am now full-time on a walker and am losing the ability to swallow properly. The National Institute of Health have indicated that one in every 10 people in our state are living with this rare disease of some kind. This is my hope and prayer that we can set aside May as Myositis Awareness Month to give better understanding of myositis and how it affects the patient and the patient's family. My friend Sharon Davis passed away about three years ago. I learned a lot about the disease from her. Sharon's birthday is in May, and I thought it would be very appropriate that they are, that they are asking that May be appointed Myositis Awareness Month. So on behalf of myself and Sharon, please stand with us, stand with us to spread the word about this terrible muscle destroying disease, Carol Chavez. Thank you.
You're not rude.
Well, that's okay. I think it's important that we all know where you're at and what's going on, and you're so brave to come out tonight. And I just really appreciate your family being here with you. So on behalf of the city of Huntsville, we're going to proclaimate May, and I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas residents of Huntsville are among those affected by myositis and other rare diseases because nearly 1 in 10 Americans have this rare disease. And whereas idiopathic inflammatory myopathies collectively referred to as myositis are rare chronic autoimmune muscle wasting diseases. And myositis often features debilitating muscle inflammation and other symptoms such as pain, fatigue, and trouble swallowing. And myositis can result in myositis associated with enterotistial lung disease. And whereas more research is needed to identify the cause of the modes of treatment for the myositis group of this disease, which includes anti-MDA5 auto antibody positive myositis, anti-synthetase syndrome, dermatomyelitis, juvenile dermatomyelitis, immune medical necrotizing myopathy, inclusion body myositis, and polymyosis. And whereas myositis is difficult to diagnose, so treatment is often delayed, and individuals generally experience difficulty finding a healthcare provider with experience in their condition. And whereas all who suffer with myositis experience reduced quality of life, especially as no cure has been found and life expectancy is shortened, especially for those with inclusion body myositis. And women and people of color with all forms of myositis experience particularly pronounced health disparities. And whereas Myositis Association, also known as TMA, is leading international patient advocacy organization servicing myositis community, focusing on patient services, education, research, and public awareness so as to achieve a world without myositis. And whereas the Myositis Association is organizing a nationwide observance of Myositis Awareness Month from May 1st through the 31st, 2025. Therefore, be it resolved, and you'll be happy about this part, Carol. Therefore, be it resolved that May 2025 will be observed in honor of Ms. Sharon Davis as Myositis Awareness Month in Huntsville. And that all the citizens in Huntsville are encouraged to come together, learn more about the forms of myositis and its symptoms, and support the families in our community who will benefit from greater awareness of these rare diseases. In testimony whereof, I, Mayor Abraham Travis Dodson, have hereunto set to my hand and caused the seal of the city of Arkansas to be affixed this 12th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2025, and in the end of the city, and it's 188th year, it is so ordained.
Thank you.
And I'll grab that mic for you, and I'll bring you this. I've got one of these for you.
Okay. After I was diagnosed with this, I spent a good year going, if they say they can't do anything, you don't file. What am I doing? Don't you sit here, do nothing? And I did for a little while. Anyway, I joined the Myositis Association and volunteered. I'm now the coordinator for Arkansas to get stuff going here. And the more you do, the more they let you do.
That's true.
Who knows what I'll be back asking for? Right now, one of the things we're going to be doing is asking legislators and representatives to co-sponsor, I don't know if you call it a bill, I'm not very political, but a representative in Georgia has already put this on, and we're asking other representatives to co-sponsor it with him to try to make this nationwide, the May nationwide. And here's the problem, the doctors don't know about it. And they'll even tell you, we don't know because there's not enough people to make it profitable, maybe? I don't know. But some of my doctors have learned from me through the association that I've learned, and that's pretty sad. So I jumped on board, try to help them, spread the word, so polymyosis. If y'all hear it out there, I know somebody like that, but that's what we're doing. And thank you again, Travis, Mayor Dodson, for doing this for me. I know a lot of you, that's some church family here. You Scotty, it's every little boy.
She did.
When he had hair. Bettina, I've known her forever. Yeah. Anyway, no Steven, not him, but Patty took me in, let me work with her for many years. I'd still be there if I could. I love doing hair. But anyway, that's all I've got to say about that, is just help us spread the word. Oh, and one more thing, and I always thought this was interesting. When I heard about the muscle, my first thought was like the doctors, man, I'm out of shape. I just need to exercise more. But I never thought about needing muscles to swallow. I'm going, what? And if you've known me very long, you know I used to be quite a bit heavier than this. If you can't eat, you can't. But you know, it's just things. It's totally different than I ever dreamed it would be. But anyway, thanks again for having us, and thanks for doing this, whoever was involved.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you all. Bye. Okay, continuing on, approval of minutes of March 10th meeting.
It should be April 14th.
April 10th.
Yeah.
April 14th.
April 14th.
April 14th.
April 14th. I'm telling you, time flies.
Make a motion to approve minutes as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comments. Anybody got any public comments? Kenny, Kennedy, you got anything you want to say? Listen. We're on about a two-second delay, just in case you cuss, so. All right, we'll move on into city department reports. They were provided in an email with the agenda packet. We'll go ahead and start with you, chief.
Yeah, I was just, I had sent some numbers in at the last city council meeting, and somebody had realized that one of the columns was really high on the number. And what I did is when I transposed those numbers, when I transposed all of the officers' numbers onto the total sheet, one of the columns was still K9, and I didn't realize it. And I just transposed all the numbers over. So that one column from last month, I believe it was, was really high, and there was no K9 at that point, at that time. I fixed that in this one, so these numbers are correct and the ones that you have today, and everything from here on out should be correct.
Okay.
So, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. What else you got, chief?
Want to introduce Officer Samuels?
Our new hire, did he leave?
Stand up back there, Mr. Samuels, yeah.
Come on board.
No, stand up, turn around. No, I'm. He's a local guy, correct? You're out at Forum, is that correct? Yeah. So he's pretty local to us here.
Yeah, lots of military experience and some medical training that's going to be very beneficial to the department and to him moving forward, so yeah.
Absolutely.
I don't think I have really anything else.
Any questions of Chief Thomas? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Public Works Department, Brian, what you got for us?
We've had a little flooding going on. We've been working on, we've removed some leaves and everything on the backside of Governor's Hill, cleaned some culverts, and we're starting mowing, weed eating, brush hogging, all of our.
One of the things I'll add to Brian's report there is, this has been catastrophic. I think we figured out that it was a 175-year flood event about an hour and seven minutes, basically, is what happened to us the other day whenever it flooded down here in front of the pantry. Ms. Fritz and myself have been working with the pantry owner and the property owner there. We've got a serious issue up there that we're going to have to address, and it's for the public safety and the welfare of the public that it doesn't flood like that anymore. So we've enlisted the help of Charlie Presley. He's our engineer, and he's going to do a flood study up there. One of the other things, and I was happy to talk to Mr. Davis. They have a piece of property I think that they're selling a portion of up there on Governor's Hill, and we think that we can maybe remedy a lot of this problem by putting in a retention pond up there on our currently water and sewers property up there, and it's not going to impede the sale of that half acre or whatever it was. So just a lot of things, and it's an understatement whenever Brian makes that of what we've had to contend with. Paradise Lane is another one. The other thing I've enlisted the help of Charlie to do too is to, we don't have a master flood plane, I'm sorry, we don't have a master flood plan within the city, and we need to establish that. So I'm going to have him enlist the help of the planning commission and see what we can get done as far as that goes. So we've just, we've noticed some deficits that we've had, especially with this type of event, and I'm solely afraid that it's going to get worse as time goes on. So we'll be remedying those. So Brian, thank you. I know it was 11th hour that we had you get up there on equipment, do all that, so thank you for what you did. Got anything else?
Well, I will say I'd been in my house for 28 years, and it's the first time it's ever flooded up to my door in 20. It was impressive rain for that, how it moved through that area that quick, but the pitcher's coming off it.
Oh.
It was extremely impressive.
It was outstanding, and.
If you want to use that word. I mean, I mean, it was impressive.
Outstanding flood, yeah. All right. Moving on, public. Yeah, exactly. Moving on from Public Works, Water Department.
I don't have too much. We're still working on the wastewater project, a few other things. I will let everybody know in the next couple of months, we're going to test and repaint all of the projects in town. We're waiting to get the new tank up, so if you see the guys with the paint, feel free to kick it away from your cars. We should be getting that done by July, I hope.
Good deal. Any questions?
Are they all painted the same?
The bases and the trunks are going to be red, the caps we paint to help code them for fire.
So it's just the caps that change. Pressure come out.
Any questions of Mr. Davis? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Fire Department.
Just a few things to add to this thing. One of the things, and I've been giving you that massive chart on the back with yours experience and who's doing what, is I have said over and over again, the lack of available bodies is our big concern. So training becomes the important part for us. Right now, of the people on the rosters, there are 16 on our roster that are eligible to go off and do extra training because we got three that are still going through the probie status. 11 of those 16 will be going to additional trainings. They're giving up, with the exception of Jason and McGordy, who are obviously ours and we pay for. Everybody else has given up their vacation time to go on these trainings, going away for a week or so to go do all these things. And I can't emphasize how important that is for them to be able to get the training because as you can see, you know, there's not, there's not massive amounts of experience on the department. So just want you to understand, when these people are going off on training, it's them taking their vacation time to go do those things. That's a, that's a big deal for us, is to do that. And also see that there are some of us that are very old, and there's not enough of us that are very young on this department. So we're working on that. Among that, I've got several going down to Arkansas Fire Academy first week of June. We've got, of course, Kevin Miller's doing the EMR class right now. The REV group, which is the large conglomerate that buys up fire apparatus manufacturers, they have a training for lousy vehicle technicians. And we're going to be sending Joey McConnell and Billy Ketner. They'll be going up later this year to that training. That's a week's worth of training, and it has all kinds of incredible classes that'll be available for them. Ketner has already been through and has got his EV Tech 1, I believe, and then Joey will get his. What that allows them to do is they will be able to do different maintenance for us that we've been having to pay people big money to do that. So that is a, that is a plus for us. Other than that, the only other significant thing, one thing that we did get pointed out to us last week, we talked about this before, when the 2021, when the state of Arkansas adopted the new fire code in 2021, 2021 fire code in last January, there were a whole lot of changes. One of the changes that I have not, have not enforced yet, but now I've been made aware of it, is if a, if a school or company or anybody has a repeat offense, if we have written them up for something and it gets repeated, then we have to submit that to the state fire. So it's not just handled in-house. We do handle it with them, and then we go from there. They'll contact what's doing there. So that's a, that's a different. Only other thing was, I think everybody's heard of the dangerous joint rescue operation between the PD and the Fire Department, and of course, Councilwoman Lacy last night. I think we did manage to save, save the individual. I think the former coroner was out of luck because it did live and has been delivered to the wildlife sanctuary. So it was a great job, the law enforcement folks, nobody was tased. I didn't, nothing was caught on fire, so Hawk will live, I think. So thank you, Councilwoman Lacy. Well, she did, she did.
I certainly was not the one that put the box on him.
She did come see me and say, well, can I just borrow your turnouts to get this thing?
Hawk is not the last name, it is the animal.
It's the animal.
A bird of prey.
Bird of prey, yes.
And let me tell you, you know, you always think about these things as mayor, but I tell you, I mean, you're always on call. So what time was it, Ms. Lacy? About 8:30 last night? It's like, hey, we've got a hawk. Tell me more.
Yeah. Try to find someone to come get it.
Yeah, find somebody to come get it, which we are not trained in hawk wrangling.
At least it wasn't an emu. We've done that.
This is true. It was not an emu.
Yeah.
So that's it. Anybody have any questions, comments, statements?
Well, we certainly went the extra mile for the hawk. I'm impressed with all of our guys here that helped out with that.
Our PD people did a very, very good job.
Yeah, animal control, dude.
Yeah, and animal control, yeah.
Do what?
I think wrestle that hawk down.
Meisenheimer, is he back there?
Yeah.
He's the star back there. Now, I will say that Officer Taylor took complete control of supervision of the incident on there and had instant command the entire time, and I felt no danger at any moment, so thank you for that.
Yep. Meisenheimer was great until it came time to throw the box down, and he was like, here you go, Jared Rogers. Let Jared go ahead and throw the box on the wild hawk.
I don't blame you, Zach. That's a smart move on your part.
Actually, what she said is, your face is too pretty, Jared, you did it.
Amen. Amen.
I would never.
Anything else, chief?
That should be it.
All right. Finance Director.
So in March, we received a statement from our bank saying we were going to renew our CD. And so I sent out bids to all the banks, and CS Bank came back with the highest bid. They came back with 3.92% for 24 months. So what it, we transferred our, we had it at Anceps, so it was 626,392.25. So also in the budget this year, we had an excess of 400,000 for the bonds that got paid off. So the mayor decided that we were going to put 126,607.75 to make $750,000 CD that we opened at CS.
And I'll remind everybody that we voted on up to $400,000 was that. Well, with the tax revenue and the way this come in this first quarter, and I'll get to that in my report a little later on, I felt comfortable in moving $126,000 basically over to that account and making that a cool 750,000, drawing 3.92% interest over 24-month period.
And then also, so I had to go and set up a new bank account for Kevin's.
Retirement fund?
For the grant.
No, they haven't granted.
So I would like to, due to bank requirements, I would like to let it be recorded in the minutes who has approval to sign checks. So I have Travis Dodson, I have me, I have Leslie Evans, I have Janice Smith, and I have Becky Nelly. Are y'all okay with me recording that in the minutes? Just so that way we can have that on file for the banks whenever we.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Got a motion, have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah. All right, Mayor's Report. I think that's where we're at.
Yes, sir.
All right. Splash pad update. I had a meeting, Brian and I had a meeting this morning. It was a good meeting, I'll say it that way. We basically told them what we kind of expect, and we expect it by Friday. And anyway, they're, we're all hands on deck right now. I mean, we're all now there trying to fix this thing up. So obviously, we wanted to have a grand opening for this splash pad May 30th. Amongst other things that's going on on May 30th, we've decided probably to change that date. I was just visiting with Brandy about that because if they get it done by then, it's going to be an absolute miracle. But I think that we'll be a week or two out. So, you know, a delay a week or two is not going to hurt us one way or another, but that's what, that's what we're anticipating. We went ahead and filed the extension with the state. Had Becky send those letters in today requesting a 30- or 60-day extension on the timeframe so that money's still there that we can get. Anyway, that's the update on that. Another thing to go along, and I'll basically go right into this. Another thing that'll go along with that, I had a visit with Lou Thompson the other day and had a good conversation with him. If you'll, if you know how the park is laid out, on the north end of the park over by the CTE building, there is a piece of property over there behind the old Elizabeth Richardson Center that goes all the way down into the deep ravine there and actually over into the school, onto the school side, actually. And I had called, we've got to figure out parking over there. We know that everybody's just going to park in the grass, and they're going to do all that. And if we have this splash pad on in normal hours of operation, what we anticipate, you know, we don't want to impede the health unit or the library or the senior center with their parking, so we need to create our own. The school, we're going to partner with them, and we think that we're working on a grant, 210 to $250,000 grant right now that'll allow us, part of the paving, to partnership with the school, part of the paving on that project, but that's later on down the road, and some more sidewalks and trails through that area. But until then, I had visited with Mr. Thompson about selling or leasing that property to us. He had been, he had said at one point in time, back at time, that probably about a year and a half ago, that he would be interested in working with the city to see what we can do. Well, I hang up with him, get on another call, and he calls me back about two minutes later, and he said, no, I have an idea. So this is what this resolution is for. He came up with a game plan for a tax credit, basically at a predetermined price on that property. We've done a little bit of research, and we think that that property's well worth what he's offering. And he's basically going to donate that property. Now, we'll have to pay for a survey, we'll have to pay for the closing costs because it's a donation, but he basically gets the tax credit for donating us the property. So there's up to about a 1.25-acre tract of land over there that can park about 88 to 100 cars, depending on how we figure that out. So the resolution will be here before too long. That gives you a background as to why we're presenting that resolution. Jessica's done a good job. She's our. She's already got the contract ready. Uh, I, I have given that to Becky today. Uh, actually, no, I haven't. I haven't given that to her today. I had called Josh Thompson, couldn't get ahold of Lou. So, I called Josh to get all the pertinent email addresses and all that. And once they sign off on this, we'll start development of that, uh, for gravel lot. The other good thing about that piece of land is Brian and I have went over there, there's already clearing over there, that it's gonna make it a lot easier on us to, to get people down to the bottom of the hill from that side. Uh, so, uh, about, about 40 foot wide, once you get down in there to it, it's already cleared. So, I mean, yeah, we're gonna have to put in some culverts and things of that nature, but, uh, we just really appreciate the Thompson family and, 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 uh, them, them making that offer. And I think that is a awful kind of them because like I said, we were gonna have to end up leasing the property if, if they didn't do that. So, uh, kudos to Lou and his family.
You'll access it from the CTE parking lot?
You know where you go into the CTE buildings now? Uh, we'll probably eventually, and, and our, our vision is, is this, we'll probably eventually pave that as, and, and actually call it a through street because once you go down the hill and across, we're not impeding the walking trail at all. We can actually build a bridge at some point in time over to, over to the, uh, Activity Center. And that will be another ingress egress for what we're doing, which will relieve traffic, especially on Missouri Street that we're dealing with now with Presley's. So, anyway, looking, looking forward to that. Again, master plan and later on down the road, but that's what we're, that's what we're anticipating. So, um, I have a Arkansas Rural Development Conference that I'll be attending, May the 20th through the 22nd. Uh, I'm happy to announce, uh, just got this great news the other day. Thank you, Sean, for all your diligence on this, but the, uh, uh, the city was awarded 1.3556 million dollar ARPA grant, uh, to water and sewer the other day. So, thank goodness that that finally come through. Um, we will be on a conference call tomorrow with RDOT, Mr. Presley and myself. Uh, Bettina, this is for the, uh, finally, we're getting some traction from RDOT on the TAP grant that goes from the top of the Ohio School Hill, all the way down Main Street, that over there behind on Lee, over, over in front of Sutherland's and all that. So, we've finally got some traction with them and this is a grant that we've been working on, seems like while I was on city council for, you know, for so five years at least. And they finally, they're finally starting to loosen the belt and give us the money that we need to do that. There's some questions we've gotta have answered. There's some things that we're gonna, uh, stand affirmative on that, uh, that the, the state is asking us to do and there's no sense in trying to reinvent the wheel and one of them's on Ms. Ms. Colgar's property up there at Surplus City. So, uh, we, we look, uh, forward to that conversation with them tomorrow. Uh, obviously, the flooding issues, we've mentioned those. Um, I, just so y'all know, because, and I want everybody to understand this and be clear about this, just so you all know, uh, the, the sales tax revenues for the first quarter have not come in as strong as what we thought they would have been. We're down, actually, we're about break even now after we collected the last one, correct?
Correct.
Uh, but they were down both, both for January and February. We're talking about it now in May because that's, we don't get March until the end of April or May. Um, so anyway, um, I have imposed a, uh, spending, uh, freeze. If anybody spends more than a thousand dollars in any given department, uh, there'll be clarification on what those, uh, charges are. Uh, and that's what you all pay me to do is to watch the money. So, we're, we're imposing that. Uh, now, obviously, there's things that are already budgeted that, that we're gonna allow for and things of that nature, but it, it, right now, uh, especially with the recession looming and some other things happening, we wanna, we wanna try to get ahead of this as much as we possibly can. So, we've, we've put in a, a, a spending freeze. If you're spending more than a thousand dollars, you, you gotta come over and visit with us about it. So, uh, we're doing that. Um, you've already told them about the 126,000? Okay, uh, this has been a little bit of a controversy. Is Ms. Thomas here? Yeah, good to see you. You sitting behind Sean's head there. Sorry. Um, this has been a little, this has been a little bit of a controversy, but regarding an article, uh, in, in the paper, uh, the, the planning commission was a bit premature in an assessment of a so-called falsified application that is currently under investigation. So, we are looking into that right now. And at this point in time, uh, I think Jess is, Jessica's going to address the planning commission on, uh, Wednesday. I think you're planning on being here for that?
I'll try to be.
Yeah. Um, and, and certainly, there's, there's obviously, and we all know this, there's, there's one side, there's two sides, sometimes three sides to every story. So, we're working through that right now as we speak, uh, and at this time, we will issue a statement soon. So, I don't know when that'll be, but we'll, we'll correct any, anything that we might have prematurely discussed or anything of that nature. So, I've been in, in contact with that. Lastly, and certainly not least, I'm, I'm asking everybody here to put down May the 30th at 5:30 on your calendars.
I got something that night.
Yeah, you do have something that night. As many of y'all know, Chief Thomas is finally hanging it up. He's finally decided to retire. And for that, we wanna give him a, uh, a send-off like none other. So, we're gonna invite everybody, all employees and all elected officials, as well as the public to drop in by and, and say some, uh, say some things. We've got a little program. Uh, Kennedy's been working diligently, his daughter back there, and I know Jennifer has too. Um, and this is a, a bittersweet moment for us at, as a city. And I have visited more with Chief Thomas in the past four weeks than I have probably in two and a half years. Um, trying to, trying to beg him to stay. Uh, but at the same time, I know that he's left the department better than he found it. We have worthy and well-qualified individuals sitting in this audience tonight. We will be announcing an interim chief. We will do our due diligence. And, uh, just so everybody knows in this room, something that a lot of people didn't know, uh, is we, uh, interdepartmentalized this for a while, but, uh, Josh Herring, Captain, has been, uh, kind of stepping in the, in, in the chief's role, uh, so to speak, for the last two or three months. Josh, is that correct? And, uh, he'll, he'll be named as our interim chief, uh, and then we'll, we'll go through the process. We have to advertise and do all that good stuff. And, uh, we've got some decisions to make about a few other little minor, minor things here and there, but, uh, we just, we, we don't wanna detract from, from what chief has meant to us at this city. It has just been absolutely a well-oiled machine and your ability to speak eloquently at any meeting, uh, your ability to have compassion, uh, and kindness, uh, to those that haven't broke the law, similar to those that have broke the law, is uncanny. And I, my hat's off to you and I absolutely respect you for everything, um, everything that you've done for this city and this community. So, uh, May the 30th at 5:30, uh, over at the Basham Building, is that correct, Jen? Okay. We've got some special things coming up on that day for Chief Thomas. So, uh, anyway, everybody's invited, put it on your calendar. I, I would really like to see everybody show out in full force to, to give him a good send-off. So, anyway, Chief, you got anything you wanna add today?
I just, I'd like to say it's been one of the greatest honors of my life to serve our community and, and the city of Huntsville and, uh, to lead a group of guys that I've been fortunate to, uh, from corporal all the way up to chief of police and, uh, got a great crew working here. I'm very confident that they can handle what comes their way. I'll just be a phone call away, uh, but, uh, I don't answer, leave a message, so.
Several.
Thank you.
How many years?
Uh, 20, 28 years, six months, six months, yeah, 28 years, six months. So, yeah. That's the countdown. That's the countdown.
Countdown. But no, we, we do appreciate that and I, I hope everybody comes to this and honors Chief and his outstanding, uh, outstanding service to this community for sure. So, and
For those of us who've been here a long time and know what it was like before Chief Thomas took over, the professionalism that he has brought to this and the training that his people go through and the things that they do, uh, we have been very lucky to have him.
It is absolutely, uh, Captain Herring had sent me, I, I was working on a deal for Chief and he'd sent me basically his accolades. And I didn't, I'm, I'm, I didn't bring them because we're saving that. I am absolutely in awe and absolutely taken back by what Chief Thomas has done over his, not only his service as a law enforcement officer and chief of police, but what he's done for this community. He puts this community first at every turn. We would have a $400,000 bill on the Basham Building if it wasn't for him. Amongst other things, Kennedy wouldn't be in business if it wasn't for him, correct? I mean, honestly, I mean, he helps everybody with everything and we're gonna miss that. We're certainly gonna miss that.
I'll be around.
You better be. That's all I gotta say. But no, we, we thank you.
Police chief or his OCD was gonna take over and he's gonna in other trouble. So, we were glad to have him.
Yeah. May the 30th, put that on your calendars, 5:30.
Thank you.
That is.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations.
It's impressive you're already that old. I mean, it don't seem like we could be there. I mean, it just blows my mind.
I feel that, oh, yeah. It's not the years, it's the mileage, so.
Yeah. Scott, how's that make you feel since you're older than he is? Yeah. No comment.
Overdose.
All right, and that's all for me. So, anyway, um,
I was talking to the number of former students of mine in this room right now.
Yeah. Economic Development Director, Randy, you got anything for us? Okay. Um, Planning Director, Ms. Thomas, you got anything to add?
Okay.
Okay. Building Inspector, visited with him last week. I think you, that was included in your packet. Uh, Code Enforcement Officer Jeremy, what's the day he's gonna be off for his
He left, he left this morning and be back the 23rd.
The 23rd. Right now, as it stands, as far as code enforcement goes, we've got a lot of good things going in our direction. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna have to start working on though, and I, you and I made your school visit, um, up above Station One up here, we've gotta, we've gotta do that to prepare for the sidewalks that we're gonna be putting in. So, um, we gotta get some of that moved out of the way. But other than that, that's the one thing that come up today. Everything else, it, it can hold for two weeks. So, um, Animal Control Officer, poor old Brett and Chris and who all pitches in to help us out with that. Hawks and pigs and guineas and sheep and everything else. So, anyway.
Rural America.
Rural America. Yeah. All right, Commission and Committees, uh, reports were emailed with the agenda packet. Economic Development Meeting was April the 5th. Huntsville Water Meeting was April the 17th. Airport Commission Meeting was April the 28th. Unfinished business, believe it or not, we have none. Take that as a win. Uh, new business, Resolution 6 dash 2025, the acceptance of certain real estate and approval of, uh, donation agreement of real property. Do you care? I know you don't like it and I've got it if you don't want to. Will, will you, um, will you read that so they'll know what we're doing?
Yeah, so this is Resolution Number 6, uh, dash 2025, a resolution regarding the acceptance of certain real estate and approval of donation agreement of real property. Whereas the city of Huntsville of Arkansas, um, has reached an agreement by and between the city of Huntsville, Arkansas and Tiffany Hawk Properties LLC for the purpose of accepting certain real estate. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Huntsville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council has reviewed the donation agreement of real property attached to this resolution as Exhibit A and hereby authorizes the city to enter into a donation agreement of real property to accept approximately 1.25 acres behind the Elizabeth Richardson Center of North College Street in Huntsville, Arkansas. Section 2, that the city council also authorizes the mayor to pay the cost of a survey for the property and all closing costs. Section 3, that the city council approves the acceptance of real property from Tiffany Hawk Properties LLC and the Thompson family and thanks some further generous gift. Section 4, that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Travis Dodson and the city recorder,